I'll call the March 23rd, 2015 Regular City Council Meeting to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we get rolling, I'd like to welcome all of you to the new City Hall. Council chambers, welcome. And I think we almost have enough seats for everybody. We'll get started with the -- first we'll approve the agenda. Any changes to the agenda, Lori?
No changes.
You got a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I suppose we've approved the agenda. Next is the open forum. That's an opportunity for citizens to address the council on subjects not on the current agenda. Anybody wish to adjust the council on a subject that's not on the current agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to visitors' presentation. We have two. Representative Nash was due to join us, and he's not available tonight. The house is in session. So first, we're going to go with Will. Will, you want to introduce yourself?
It would be helpful if you'd sit at -- yeah, in order to get you televised and taped, you gotta sit there and speak into the microphone.
Okay. Very exciting. My name is -- my name is Will Jedlica, and I am the general manager of the new Victoria's Market, opening in May-April, and just wanted to take a minute to come out and say how excited we are about opening the grocery store. I know the crowd didn't show up to see me tonight, so I'll keep it fairly short here, but, you know, just wanted to give a quick update. As we're working hard to get the store ready to open, some of the things that we're doing, we're adding a wellness department to the store, so people who were used to going there before are going to see that new feature. We're also adding a large bulk food department and a bakery, which is going to be -- include many breads that are baked from scratch and artisan breads. And we're also going to have a just really amazing meat department and produce department with some features that we didn't offer before. We're also remodeling the store to give it a little more of a, I guess you'd say, farmer's market look. And so, again, just excited to be a part of it and to be getting the store open for you. We're shooting for probably sometime around April 20th right now, so -- but we're going to make sure that the store is ready to go before we open it. We had a great job fair this past weekend, making calls back to about 50 people who turned out, who are great applicants. So, I guess, questions or comments?
Anybody like to?
So excited to have you back.
Well, excited to be back. There's a lot of excitement over the store as we're making some of the changes, and it'll be fun to get people in the store and see some of the changes we've made and see some of the old faces, like Mr. Rick Stuckey here, who's going to be back in the store running it for us, so.
A friend of his is going to be there, too, isn't she?
Absolutely.
Lori said it. We're thrilled to have you back. You can't imagine the number of comments and questions we've had over the last several months about, "When's it gonna, when's it gonna, when's it gonna?" And to hear that now you're that close is really great to hear.
Thank you. And we don't have a definite date yet, but we're feeling pretty good about that mid-to-late April timeframe. So, as we get closer, we'll let people know, so.
Thank you, Will. Any other questions? Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Next, for visitor Jennifer Kresch, the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now that we have this great new council chambers and everything up and running wonderfully, Lori asked me to give a little update on just a reminder on our City Council meeting rules and just that there's an opportunity for everyone to speak at some point in time in the -- during a meeting. During our open forum, this is an opportunity for citizens to discuss items that aren't on our agenda. And we do have up at where we sign in at the entry there on the table, a little request to speak form. If citizens could fill that out and just hand that in to Lori or the mayor prior to the council meeting, just to get everybody's name and what they'd like to talk about prior to the meeting to make sure that we acknowledge them and give them the opportunity. And just a reminder, like, on the consent agenda, if there's anything that somebody would like pulled off on there to discuss, again, fill out one of those forms, and we will pull that off to discuss it. And any other items on the agenda, again, just fill out a form, and the mayor will call you -- excuse me, to the podium, and you'll be allowed to discuss the item during the City Council meeting.
Yeah, hopefully that's not too burdensome, but we got to know that you want to speak, so filling out the form and handing it to city manager would be a big help, so we don't miss you.
It also helps for our record to make sure we get your name spelled correctly and...
That's important.
Yeah. So, just a brief update on that.
Thank you, Jen. We're going to hear from you later on minutes and such, no?
Yes. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. That's where all items are approved with one motion. They're assumed to be non-controversial, and they'll be, again, approved with one motion unless one of the council members wishes to remove any one of them. Anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We approve the consent agenda. Next, we move to the finance section. Kelly?
It's that time of year again when our audit is coming up, and we review the general fund, fund balance assignment, and then the various transfers we need for the year. In looking at what we do for year-end, there's a couple of different things we do. We'll look at our assigned fund balance to determine if there are some unspent items that we'd like to carry over to a future year, and then also look at any possible contingencies that may have occurred after our budget has been set, and we have the opportunity to set those aside in assigned fund balance to cover those contingencies. We also like when we have a policy where we will end the year with a 30% unassigned fund balance in our general fund, and the 30% refers to the next year's budgeted expenditures less transfers. Some other transfers we do, we close out construction funds, any leftover dollars to the debt service fund, and then we'll have a variety of other transfers from time to time. The Finance Committee did meet and review the proposed fund balance assignment and transfers and recommended council approval. In looking at the agenda statement, I passed out and updated one. The amount that we're proposing to transfer from the Astor Trail Construction Fund to the Astor Trail Debt Service Fund has decreased slightly. Instead of $331,279.40, it's now $325,665.05, and that is to leave a little bit in that fund. We do have a little bit of retainage out there that is owed to the contractor, so we'd like to...
Roughly how much?
About $5,000, a little over $5,000.
At some point, you'll close that out to...
Yeah, we're essentially closing the fund, but we're leaving a little bit of cash in the fund to pay that final amount to the contractor. I would imagine that will be in the near future. So, in looking at the proposed assignments, I've got a chart comparing what we had in 2013 and then what we're proposing for 2014, and I'll just briefly go through those. We're proposing a decrease in the employee insurance premium contingency from $46,925 down to $25,000. That's a set aside in the event we'd have a large health insurance premium. We're proposing to eliminate the human resources consulting assignment of $30,000. The staff just felt, and the Finance Committee agreed, that there was no longer a need for that. We do budget for that, but that large of a set aside was not needed. We recommend continuing with the 2013 assignment of $15,500 for the project to recodify the city's ordinances. For information technology, we're recommending a slight increase from $10,400 to $14,600, and this will allow us to complete the server upgrade project that we began in 2014. For record scanning, we're recommending an increase from $4,000 to $20,000. We have been budgeting for this and have not been spending the money for scanning. However, given the move to City Hall and the amount of space we have, the Finance Committee felt it was a good time to invest in scanning, and so we'll look at what we can do with that in terms of getting the equipment we need and then possibly hiring an intern to do a lot of that scanning over the summer. There is an amount of $10,712 in there for unemployment benefits. The city is a reimbursing employer, meaning if a former employee gets unemployment benefits, we have to pay that regardless of the reason. The $20,000 for fire relief pension, the Finance Committee also discussed that. Each year, we budget for that, and there was not a required contribution from the state this year, but the committee felt it would be a good idea to set that aside in the event there was a downturn in the economy and pension assets were to decrease. That would give us a little bit of a cushion and not affect our budget. There's also a line item of $20,000 for either a PTO conversion or to set aside for sick leave severance.
PTO?
Paid time off. So, we'd go to paid time off in lieu of the traditional vacation and sick plan that we currently have. And then finally, the last item is $80,000, which is a contingency for legal expenses. We have already budgeted for the Wasserman easement case, but we do have some other cases going, and Finance Committee thought it would be a good idea to set that aside in the event there are some large bills for that. So, the net effect is that the fund balance assignment would go from $106,825 in 2013 to $205,812 in 2014. And what would happen is if these amounts don't get spent, the council would have the option to transfer them or use them to offset other budget items. After the transfers would be completed, there still would be an additional $81,800 left in general fund, assigned unassigned fund balance, that would need to be transferred out in order to get to our 30% goal. So, staff is recommending, and the Finance Committee concurred on transferring that to the long-term street maintenance fund. That has been our practice in the past, and that amount is in addition to the $165,000 budget amount that has already been done. Finally, I talked a little bit about the Astor Trail, that number. What that represents is when we bonded for the Astor Trail project, we did not spend all of the money for that, and per our debt covenant agreement, we need to transfer that unspent amount into our bond debt service fund. And I think that covers everything, so staff would be looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-16 with the change in the Astor Trail Construction Fund and Debt Service Fund amounts.
Any questions or comments? Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-16, approving fund balance assignment and transfers for year-end 2014.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We've made the decision. Thank you, Kelly. Next, we'll deal with donations. We've got a lengthy list tonight, thankfully. Who wants to read them?
I move we accept donations from the following people and organizations. Canine Club and Spa Incorporated for $200 designated towards T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Signature Electric Company, an amount of $150. T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Rob's Electric, $200 for T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Park Nicolet, an amount of $150 for T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Alphabet Junction Learning Center, the amount of $100 for concerts in the park. Matheson Cabinets Incorporated, an amount of $150 for T-Ball and Coach Pitch. IWCO Direct, $150 for T-Ball and Coach Pitch. DMA Dentistry, $150. Concerts and movies in the park. Lions Tap, $200. T-Ball, Coach Pitch, concert, and movie. And we thank them very much for their donations.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Let me just ask a quick question here. This is a little longer list than we're used to seeing, and I see some themes here. I'm wondering if maybe somebody could elaborate on how the pocketbooks all opened up and graced us, because this is really a great outpouring for some pretty worthy causes.
Sure. I can certainly ask Ann Monkey to add in, but we do have a sponsorship program for annual events, and we go out and we actively work with the businesses to see if they are interested in partnering with us on the items that you see here. Some of our sports programs, our concerts in the park, and so at this meeting and hopefully at the next few meetings, you'll be seeing the results of that, those partnership efforts.
Thank you.
This really says a lot about Victoria, too. As Jim said, we thank you very much for the generous contribution. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We've accepted the donations. There's no public hearing tonight. We have unfinished business, the agenda minute, and video options. Jenny, again?
Hopefully the cough is gone now. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Back in December, we had a brief discussion on options for City Council minutes, how extensive we want to do them. You know, we kind of discussed verbatim versus kind of a summary, and the style that we are doing now, kind of a full detail style. And there were some other options out there to be, allow citizens, you know, more options. So, I'm just going to kind of explain a couple of items that we're doing right now. Right now, our videos, we host them on YouTube. They're put up on YouTube, and some of the videos are agenda parsed, where we put a timestamp on them, on the different agenda items, where you can click on it and go right to that discussion. It's kind of, you know, within a few seconds or so of that item. With moving into the new City Council chambers and learning the new system and all that, our videographer hasn't been able to do it with each meeting. That video is not necessarily tied to an agenda. We don't have the option to pull our agenda and all of our supporting documents in with that video on YouTube. So, currently, that's how, you know, we host our video for everybody to see. And there is an option out there to integrate our agenda, our supporting documents, and our video. And that option is Granicus software. It is the leading software option for governments with the type of agenda, supporting documents, and video format. And could you kind of pull that up? What Granicus does is it takes the video, and we integrate our agenda with supporting documents, and we can actually stream these videos live during the council meeting through the software, so everybody can watch the video live, you know, from home or wherever they'd like. After the meeting, when everything gets posted up there, it will be integrated with the agenda, where you can go and click either on the item on the agenda or in a different area to go directly to that specific discussion in the meeting and pull up just that audio of the meeting and the supporting documents. The City of Jordan was the latest city to integrate this into their meeting format. To give you just a little idea of what it looks like, if you want to click on that...
(Inaudible). A call to meeting order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, what you can do is, you can, over on the left, under the City Council meeting, where it has, you can click on any of those items and jump directly to that discussion within the meeting, so you don't have to listen to something that you're not interested in. And over on the right, where you have the agenda, you know, and kind of in the PDF or Word document there, you can also click on any of those items, and it jumps you to that section in the meeting as well, in the video. And also the items where you've got the little paper clip, you can click on those, and that pulls up the supporting documents instead of the whole big packet that we currently download. So, everything is integrated into the video and the agenda. So, this is after, you know, the video is uploaded with this whole parsing, what will be viewable by everybody. If you go, if you go back out, if you go back out one option, it also gives you, where it says, "Search Archives," it gives you a really good option to search. They just had a, if you just type in "water," you can search the full agenda, different options, and it'll pull you to that video, to those agendas, and you can go directly to those, to that audio section within the meeting there to view those items. So, you can get real specific into the items that you're looking for. There's unlimited storage space with this option hosted online through Granicus, so we can archive these indefinitely, you know, year after year. We won't run into any storage space. Some other cities that utilize this are City of Savage, Edina, Hugo, the Public Utilities Commissions. There's just, there's over 100 entities and government entities in the city of, or in the state of Minnesota that utilize it. So, this is an option to integrate and make everything a little bit more user-friendly for everybody, make our video option a little bit easier to use, get directly to the points of interest during the City Council meetings. We still need to utilize minutes, do minutes. Those we can also integrate into the agenda in here. And as far as minutes, it's really up to, you know, the City Council to what type of minutes they want to do. Every city does them a little bit different, and I've provided, you know, links in there. City of Chanhassen does them verbatim. One of their sets of minutes was 65 pages long. Definitely, you know, an expensive option to do, that is, you know, an option to do. But we also, you know, if we would integrate Granicus and all that, we do have, you know, a video, you know, of the audio. We do keep audio, you know, the videos, the DVDs. I've also included the, another sample, the City of Hugo, a really good example of a summary format type of minutes, where it doesn't get into a question-and-answer type of a session like we do now. It's really a summary of the discussion of the City Council and staff. It summarizes, you know, the discussion and, you know, what the vote was. And then there's also cities that, there's a city in here that I included that does a vote-only. That does not give you really any detail, just gives you kind of a vote-only, not much of a historical perspective, you know, for archiving in the minutes to go back, you know, unless you go back and, you know, review the video and listen to the audio on that. So, it's, as far as minutes, that's really a, what the City Council feels, what level they would like there. Staff has, you know, reviewed the different styles of minutes, and they did like the summary type of format that the City of Hugo did, felt that that would give a good level of detail. And we've also been doing the full detail type here for many, many years as well, and has been very helpful in going back and giving us a historical perspective and giving us direction and clear answers as well to move forward on, you know, various projects. So, with that being said, the Granicus option, you know, staff also feels that would be a good option for staff to be able to go back and view certain things as well as really streamline things for the public. If implemented, this option, what it would do is, on the council members' iPads, you'd get an app that would put on, be put on your iPad. When the agenda is loaded, you'd get a notice right on your app. You'd click on it, and you'd see the full agenda with all the attachments kind of in that format that you saw there. You wouldn't have to go through this downloading process that you currently do. I think today's packet was quite large. I know it took me a couple tries to download it as well, and I'm sure people, citizens and have, you know, tough times when we have large packets, too, because that's quite large and takes time to download. So, this would be a good option to be able to do that. Granicus also has various modules, so as we grow and want to add different applications onto it, it is fully expandable to add different levels of detail and really expand our options as we want to add different things to the program. That being said, as far as, this is something council would be interested in implementing. The software hardware training fees, around $4,700, that's a one-time fee. Monthly hosting fees, ongoing maintenance updates, $300 a month. We do need, on our existing equipment, a couple pieces of hardware to implement it, so it would be around a $10,000 expense to get this up and running, and then an ongoing $300 monthly fee. And we do have recording fees within our 2016 budget that will not be spent to cover this, if this is something council would like to implement.
Questions? Tom?
With regard to the, well, let me just start by saying, thank you for pulling this together. I mean, this has been a big priority, I think, for everyone on the council in terms of making sure that the greatest amount of information and the context is available to the widest audience possible. So, I think this is an important thing for us to move forward on. Regarding the expense side, it looks like there's about 90, whatever, $9,500. That's more or less a one-time expense, and then a $300 monthly hosting fee. Are there any offsetting savings in terms of our, what we do today that will reduce those expenses, whether it's the Recording Secretary or the video? Are there any offsets in that area?
Depending upon the level of minutes that we do, you know, if we kind of go down to more of a summary format versus a full detail where we have, you know, very lengthy minutes, we could have some cost savings there to offset that, as well as, you know, efficiency, you know, as far as staff and just the process for everybody, you know, you can't really put a dollar amount in that, but this will be extremely efficient for everybody.
I think this would also help address a topic that would, was a topic of discussion at our last meeting with respect to data requests and having the information much more readily available, searchable, etc.
Yes.
So, there's...
Yes, it would definitely be an efficiency there.
Staff time savings as we look at that. Thank you.
Jim?
A question for attorney. At what point do the minutes actually become the video itself, or is that possible, from the minutes of the meeting? If we could move to a summary format in the most accurate form, is the video?
Well, Mayor and Council, I guess, sort of the short answer is never. By law, by state...
By law, by statute, cities have to keep written minutes, um, and they can be very brief, and I think your staff has put in front of you the briefest version, the statutory minimum version, which is just motion by council member on, fill in the subject and then vote, three to two in favor, whatever. That level of detail is essentially the level of detail required by law, uh, and that's always required by law. You're always going to have to keep minutes in that way. To your point though, council member, um, as we have in most cities, videos that record everything that happened at council meetings, um, we are supplying the public, if you make those videos available, as you do here, you're supplying a sort of complete transcript level detail about what happens at your council meetings.
So we've noticed, we've talked about amongst council in, in open session at times in the past when the minutes, um, I didn't say that, um, but it's in the minutes and we've approved the minutes and the video counters that. So which wins in that case?
Well, uh, Mayor and council members, your minutes are the official record. Um, to your point, let me answer the question this way. If you go to the statutory minimum minutes, vote on item X, three to two, it's almost certainly not going to be contradicted by what happened at the meeting, by the video of the meeting. You're going to get those kind of minutes right every time. If you go all the way to the other end of the spectrum and you attempt to have verbatim minutes, you're almost certainly not going to get it perfectly right. It's just not practical to get verbatim minutes exactly right. Court reporters in courtrooms don't get it exactly right. So, um, so to your point, um, the more detail your minutes are, the more likely they're going to be inconsistent with, not perfectly consistent with, the videotape of the meeting. I mean, that, that's just a fact. But it never becomes the case that the video becomes the official minutes of the city. The, the written record are always, is always the minutes for the city, always the official record of the City Council meeting.
The video can offer additional detail regarding those and clarification regarding those minutes.
Especially if we go to the, the smallest amount of written material. Yeah, we spent an awful lot of time reading before the meeting, the past minutes, and you wondered, geez, what was said, and, and it just seems that that's not a very efficient way to go. And, and the good news is, we, we now have everything on tape, so it's, it's verbatim, but it's painful to go through two hours worth of, of, of a meeting, to find the, the part of the meeting that is, is of interest to you. This is almost a godsend. I mean, I don't see how, I, I'd support this, uh, wholeheartedly. We're interested in providing accurate data, and nothing could be more accurate than the video.
Mayor, if I can just say, you, I, in my time with you, I've heard any number of occasions where you've voted to amend the minutes. My ears perk up anytime I hear a council or a council member wanting to change the minutes to say what they meant to say, and I've not seen you do that. Uh, the minutes need to say what you said, whether you meant to say it or not, and that's not a problem that I've seen you having. Your minutes reflect what happened at the council meetings, and when you correct the minutes, I hear you saying, "I listened to the tape and that's not what I said, I said the following." So you're attempting to make your minutes consistent with what really happened.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Statement 15 dash 41, uh, following staff's recommendation to changing the style of minutes to summary style and adding Granicus software for video, live streaming, and agenda parsing as outlined in the Agenda Statement.
Second.
Any further discussion? I just have a question. How soon, if, if this gets approved, how soon can you implement this?
Not soon enough. Um, Granicus is about three to four months out because they have so many orders coming in. So I will definitely do my best to see if we can try and get them in here sooner, but they are about three to four months out, um, to get it implemented.
Any further, Lori?
If I could add, we also, under the franchise agreement with MediaCom, are working towards televising our meetings on our public access channel. MediaCom has some work on their end to do that they're waiting for the weather to cooperate on, um, but I'm hoping that sooner than we're live with Granicus, we'll be able to broadcast our meetings live to any MediaCom subscribers.
Do you want to comment on, I mean, at some point, the next logical question is the Planning Commission?
Yes, we would have the ability to live broadcast Planning Commission. Um, that'd be something we should talk about a little bit further because right now we don't have staff that are here. We haven't budgeted for the taping of that, and so we would need to talk about that. But with our new equipment and, uh, the channel, we would have the ability to do that.
It's a logical next step, at least, to be investigated. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So you said two months?
I will try for two months.
Thanks, Jenny.
You're welcome.
We'll move to, we'll move to new business, the appointment of commissioners to the Finance and Park and Rec Committees, and Victoria for a Lifetime Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. We had, uh, interviewed several candidates at our last council meeting work session for the Finance Committee and the Park and Recreation Committee, and the Victoria for a Lifetime Committee conducted interviews of three applicants. And I first want to just make sure that I thank all of the individuals that submitted an application and that are interested in serving on a committee. We get very valuable feedback, uh, from these committees, and they help us, um, work through a number of issues that we don't necessarily get to invest as much time at the City Council level. And so I just want to make sure that we thank those people. Tonight, we are looking to make two appointments to the Park and Recreation Committee and one appointment to the Finance Committee and three appointments to the Victoria for a Lifetime Committee. There are a couple of candidates, uh, that are interested in serving on either the Finance or the Park and Rec Committee, and there are a few candidates that have expressed a preference for a committee.
You might just want to comment, we had extensive interviews with, with these three folks.
Yeah.
Last, last time, last meeting. Any comments from council? Well, I understand John Carlson and David Meacham are both willing to serve on the Park and Rec Committee and...
That's correct.
And Tom Vogt would be a repeat, fill a repeat vacancy, his own vacancy on the Finance Committee. And then Carol Dallas, Jim Hoffman and Ginny Larkin to the Victoria for a Lifetime Committee. I'll make a motion that we appoint those individuals to those committees.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to John, David, and Tom. Carol, Jim, and Ginny. I guess I wonder why all these people are here. I think we've come to it. Lake Town Ninth Edition Sketch Plaid.
Thank you. Community Development Director Ben Landhouser is going to give a presentation and overview on this.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I'd like to do tonight, before you get into your discussion with the developer, is just provide some background information on why we're reviewing the sketch plaid tonight, and then also kind of the various steps in the process that have taken place so far, and then kind of some next steps moving forward.
And would you, would you also, and I'm going to interrupt you.
Oh, sorry.
What is a sketch plaid for the audience? What are we doing tonight?
Yep.
You're going to go through that?
Yes. So where are we? Great minds think alike. So we start about what we're reviewing tonight is a sketch plaid. Really, the intent of the sketch plaid is to allow a developer to enter into dialogue with the neighborhood, the Planning Commission, and the City Council, so that they have the ability to get some feedback, feedback before really stepping into, um, spending a lot of dollars, um, further researching something that maybe isn't in alignment with any of the objectives of those various groups. So really, tonight, you're not asked to provide a recommendation of approval, it's really more to have a discussion with the developer based on their current proposal for anything that hasn't been addressed in what their proposal identifies. After the sketch plaid, after tonight, if the developer, Lenar, is in a position they're comfortable in addressing all the feedback they've received, they would move forward with a preliminary plaid on the entirety or a phase of development, and I'll get into that a little bit, uh, more as we go through the presentation. There would also be a rezoning component to this addition in, uh, specifically, just because there are portions of the property that are not zoned beyond ag today, that would need to have a residential designation in place to allow for various types of single-family or townhome development to take place, as well as identify any, um, planned unit development, um, spec- specifics, um, based upon what their concept might show. Then they would also have, uh, a final plaid to submit to the city, be reviewed. There would also be notice on these various steps to property owners within 600 feet. And that final plaid would be kind of the, the ending point of making whatever property they're looking to develop first, uh, more of a reality, and they would begin construction there afterward. As far as the sketch plaid, uh, for what has been done to date, we did have a neighborhood meeting and a Planning Commission meeting on February 3rd. The neighborhood meeting was first, uh, had a good number of people, probably a lot of similar faces that are here tonight, uh, that attended that, were able to provide some of their concerns. And after that meeting, there were several of those individuals that provided email addresses that I've provided updates to, uh, since that time before tonight, um, and have engaged, uh, a variety of those individuals that have either asked additional questions or, uh, seek clarifications on things that they've seen or heard about. And the Planning Commission also met on February 3rd. Most of what I'll talk about here in a minute, when I review the actual ske- sketch plaid that's before you tonight, um, a lot of concerns that the neighborhood had brought up in their meeting, uh, the Planning Commission also, um, saw as valuable to consider, and I'll go through those here in a minute. Any questions, first off, on just the process of where we are tonight?
Ben, you, you used a term of planned unit development. Could you please describe what that is for everybody?
Sure. The city has the ability, under certain circumstances, to come up with and agree to a specific development plan for property. In Victoria, most of our current developments throughout the community have been done under a planned unit development. That may, um, vary, um, lot sizes, street configurations, have, uh, natural environmental concerns being addressed, addressing, uh, parkland dedication, a number of different things that aren't standard or typical to development because maybe there are, um, natural existing conditions that would require a more specific plan that a general code like our residential ordinance wouldn't necessarily address.
So, I want to say this, um, we have a city code that dictates how developments are to occur, and a planned unit development is a way to deviate from that code?
Correct, in some manner, but our code is also very specific, and if you go through the planned unit development process, we have steps and things that we require as minimums, so that we're still upholding the intent of the ordinance. We're not just sidestepping a specific regulation because it's easier for a developer. This is just a way to work with the existing environment in, under the conditions that they have.
You said it better than I did, thank you. And a planned unit development is a standard process, something we, I would say we normally go through in the last four years I've been on, it seems like.
Correct. I would say, every single, single-family residential development that has been approved in the last four to five years has been done u- utilizing a planned unit development.
Thank you.
Is this, is this a, an approach that's broadly used in other cities as well, when you're doing, uh, maybe a large development with a single property owner developer that's really, um, master planning the whole community? Is that kind of when you invoke a PUD?
That's correct.
Thank you.
It's particularly useful or appropriate in, with a contour is, isn't, or standard zoning...
When land gets challenging, sometimes you need to utilize a planned unit development to still uphold the intent of the ordinance because you can't meet some other various conditions of the property.
Lakes or hills or...
Correct.
Wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is the property that we're discussing tonight, so you can see some of the primary roadways adjacent to it, um, that are in place. And this is the proposal that Lenar has submitted, uh, for discussion tonight. In total, there are 198 single-family homes, proposed in two different phases of development, and they're try, they are somewhat, um, separated from each other on the concept. Phase one, single-family lots have kind of a pink or a purple tone to them. Phase two has more of a green or blue, depending on how you view those colors. And then phase three is intended to be, um, additional townhomes in the development. I would note, the emphasis from what we as staff have had dialogue with Lenar is really their emphasis in going through this process is, they want to move forward with phase one sooner rather than later. Phase two would come after they've met their market demand in phase one. And phase three is more consistent with what they've previously presented to the city. This isn't really something that they see today as, uh, being able to move forward with necessarily, but they wanted to make sure that, going through the process, they were still representing that land use that has been in place since their original, um, sketch plaid that they had presented to the city. Identified in this sketch plaid, um, and if we talk specifically about phase one, have access to lots off of Carriage Drive. Most of these lots are looped through, but we do have E1 cul-de-sac. I'll explain in a little bit more detail on a upcoming slide why there's a cul-de-sac here and why that may not extend further to the south. Apologize, I lost my cursor. And then we also have, as part of phase one, a continuation of Lakeside Drive that's from the Wasserman Lake Woods development that would extend over and connect to Red Fox Drive. Phase two has continuation of Red Fox Drive to the termination of Lenar's property. That is intended to continue down and intersect with Marsh Lake Road in the future as the adjoining property would be developed. And then we do have another local roadway that extends from Red Fox Drive down to Marsh Lake Road and some additional lots off of it. Throughout this concept, you will see a continuation of things that have been planned over the years, from Green Belt Trails illustrated here with kind of a dark gray line that connects, um, some of the split portions of the neighborhood that are here to keep kind of that general connectivity in place. And there are a number of different wetlands that are identified. It may be difficult to see, but it's really a green hatching that is attempting to show the most likely location of where the wetland boundaries exist, and the buffers are kind of these darker orange or brown ribbons that go around those wetlands that start to identify some sensitive areas that the developer is trying to keep out of. There are several detention ponds, um, to utilize proper stormwater management throughout, um, as a way of, uh, filtering that water before it ends the various wetlands that go before. One of the items that came up at the neighborhood meeting, the Planning Commission meeting, and has been worked on between staff and the developer to date, as well as the Park Committee, was identifying how and where a park would be located within this property. To date, the developer has dedicated to the city roughly 30 acres, a portion of which is taken up with the current elementary school site. And if I flip to an aerial that showed property boundaries, there's a, a larger portion of property surrounding the actual elementary school site that is taken up with those fields that are shown, kind of southwesterly of the actual building location, as well as a tree-lined area that separates the school site from the neighborhood here. Those are dedicated as parkland spaces. The remaining portion of parkland dedication for the entire development is a little over two acres in size. Some of the concerns raised by the neighborhood that were reiterated, um, by the Planning Commission is that there's, under current practice, difficulty in having access to the playground equipment at the school. When the school building was constructed, an agreement was put in place that allowed, um, the school exclusive rights to the playground equipment during the operations of the school or related activities at that program. The open field space southwest of the building is still open and available for use at any time, um, but again, it doesn't really address the playground equipment. So what we've been working on, um, that the Park Committee has reviewed, on this plan, it's written, but kind of difficult if you weren't specifically, I, trying to identify it, is utilizing existing piece of property that the city, uh, owns, just northeast of a detention pond. And I'll get into more specifics of what that plan may look like, but really, the intent in working with the developer was... in working with the developer was to identify the location of a park that would be beneficial to both existing and future residents in the neighborhood. And at least at this point, staff feels that this is an appropriate site to explore. And whether or not that becomes the final determination for a park land is addressed, we'll leave that up to some of the discussion tonight, as well as, we would certainly want to engage some of those adjacent property owners to inform them of what a park space may need there and any other factors that may come into realizing that space as a park. We do have more details if you have questions here in a minute when I'm done. I wanted to just give you a comparison of what the previous Scotch plat had been. This was kind of a combination of what the Scotch plat had been for the overall lake town development. You can see the area on the far west side was not developed by this property owner, it was developed as Wasserman Lake Woods, but in similar format to what's represented in this graphic. But on this Scotch plat, there were a couple of additional through roads that had been proposed in these areas here. After full, further analysis of the property for what we know today, the wetland areas are actually much more substantial than what were originally known when this concept was put together. And there were a, a number of additional lots proposed within this development. The developer, who we do have representation here, is attempting to utilize best practices for not encumbering some of those wetlands and natural resources and really just utilizing the space that's available to them. These connections are not considered to be primary through traffic roads, they, they would not have been taken as such. The primary collector through the development as stated previously is Red Fox Lane, Red Fox Drive, excuse me. But, and the through street here over to the school, you can kind of see even with the wetland buffers, there's a substantial area that would need to be filled in if a street connection would need to go, would be able to go through that area. This is a comparison of what the proposal was that the neighborhood saw on the left to what is being presented tonight. At the time, when we talk about the parkland topic, Lennar had identified several potential areas that they felt comfortable dedicating that would satisfy their parkland requirements. Most of them were passive green space dedication and trail segments. They haven't deviated from that, but based upon some of the feedback that was taken from both the neighborhood and the planning commission, they removed a lot of the trail connectivity on this side of the plat, primarily due to there's an existing eagle's nest on this upland area and there was concern about altering the activity of having that in place. And then just kind of a, a similar idea that, that, sorry, I keep losing my cursor. This area here starts to really get into a lot of the existing wetlands and that might not be in the best interest of the, the community or the city. The other change that occurred, as presented to the neighborhood, Lakeside Drive was more or less proposed as a straight shot through. Since that time, the developer has worked with the adjoining property owner on the potential of acquiring additional space. So you can see more of a jog with the roadway that would mitigate some of the concerns raised about through traffic, it would keep traffic volumes down and also allow them to better utilize the space available to them to develop and not encumber any of the wetlands as best as possible. Jumping back to the park topic, you can see here just how it was, is a larger image of what was shown on the overall Scotch plat. The developer did supply a brief iteration of what parkland development may look like on this piece. You can see playground equipment on the far west side of the property, a trail connection that would loop up and connect with the trail that's along Red Fox Lane and some landscaping around the perimeter to really define the space as what's public versus what's private with those adjoining parcels to the north. This is probably a better visual example to identify, this is the actual space that we're talking about. You can see the homes that were north of that property. And while not entirely accurate, it does.
Okay, folks, could I have, is there anybody else out there waiting to get, come in? So we're all set? I'll call the March 23rd, 2015 Regular City Council Meeting to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get rolling, I'd like to welcome all of you to the new city hall, council chambers, welcome. And I think we almost have enough seats for everybody. We'll get started with the, first we'll approve the agenda. Any changes to the agenda, Lori?
No changes.
You got a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we've approved the agenda. Next is the open forum. That's an opportunity for citizens to address the council on subjects not on the current agenda. Anybody wish to adjust the council on a subject that's not on the current agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to visitors' presentation. We have two. Representative Nash was due to join us and he's not available tonight, there's, the, the house is in session. So first, we're going to go with Will. Will, you want to introduce yourself and?
Certainly.
It would be helpful if you'd sit at. Yeah, in order to get your televised and taped, you gotta sit there and speak into the microphone.
Okay. Very exciting. My name is, my name is Will Jedlica and I am the general manager of the new Victoria's Market, opening in May-April, and just wanted to take a minute to come out and say how excited we are about opening the grocery store. I know the crowd didn't show up to see me tonight, so I'll keep it fairly short here, but, you know, just wanted to give a quick update as we're working hard to get the store ready to open. Some of the things that we're doing, we're adding a, a wellness department to the store, so people who were used to going there before are going to see that new feature. We're also adding a large bulk food department and a bakery, which is going to be, include many breads that are baked from scratch and artisan breads. And we're also going to have a just really amazing meat department and produce department with some features that we didn't offer before. We're also remodeling the store to give it a little more of a, I guess you'd say farmer's market look. And so, again, just excited to be a part of it and to be getting the store open for you. We're shooting for probably sometime around April 20th right now, so, but we're going to make sure that the store is ready to go before we open it. We had a great job fair this past weekend, making calls back to about 50 people who, who turned out, who are great applicants. So, I guess, questions or comments?
Anybody like to?
So excited to have you back.
Well, excited to be back. There's a lot of excitement over the store as we're making some of the changes and it'll be fun to get people in the store and, and see some of the changes we've made and, and see some of the old faces like Mr. Rick Stuckey here, who's, who's going to be back in the store running it for us, so.
A friend of his is going to be there too, isn't she?
(Laughter).
Absolutely.
Now, Lori said it, we're thrilled to have you back. You can't imagine the number of comments and questions we've had over the last several months about, when's it gonna, when's it gonna, when's it gonna? And to hear that now you're, you're that close, it's.
Yep.
Really, really great to hear.
Thank you. And we don't have a definite date yet, but, but we're feeling pretty good about that mid to late April timeframe, so as we get closer, we'll, we'll let people know, so.
Thank you, Will. Any other questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next for visitor Jennifer Kresh to city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now that we have this great new council chambers and everything up and running wonderfully, Lori asked me to give a little update on, just a reminder on our city council meeting rules and just that there's an opportunity for everyone to speak at some point in time in the, during a meeting. During our open forum, this is an opportunity for citizens to discuss items that aren't on our agenda. And we do have up at where we sign in at the entry there on the table, a little request to speak form. If citizens could fill that out and just hand that into Lori or the mayor prior to the council meeting, just to get everybody's name and what they'd like to talk about prior to the meeting to make sure that we acknowledge them and give them the opportunity. And just a reminder, like on the consent agenda, if there's anything that somebody would like pulled off on there to discuss, again, fill out one of those forms and we will pull that off to discuss it. And any other items on the agenda, again, just fill out a form and the mayor will call you, excuse me, to the podium and you'll be allowed to discuss the item during the city council meeting.
Yeah, hopefully that's not too burdensome, but we got to know that you want to speak, so filling out the form and handing it to city manager would be a big help, so we don't miss you.
It also helps for our record to make sure we get your name spelled correctly and.
That's important.
Yeah. So just a brief update on that.
Thank you, Jen. We're going to hear from you later on minutes and such, no?
Yes. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. That's where all items are approved with one, one motion, there's assumed to be non-controversial and they'll be, again, approved with one motion unless one of the council members wishes to remove any one of them. Anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I move we approve the, the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We approve the consent agenda. Next, we move to the finance section.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's that time of year again when our audit is coming up and we review the general fund, fund balance assignment and then the various transfers we need for the year. In looking at what we do for year end, there's a couple of different things we do. We'll look at our assigned fund balance to determine if there are some unspent items that we'd like to carry over to a future year. And then also look at any possible contingencies that may have occurred after our budget has been set and we have the opportunity to set those aside and assign fund balance to cover those contingencies. We also like, when we have a policy where we will end the year with a 30% unassigned fund balance in our general fund. And the 30% refers to the next year's budgeted expenditures, less transfers. Some other transfers we do, we close out construction funds, any leftover dollars to the debt service fund. And then we'll have a variety of other transfers from time to time. The finance committee did meet and review the proposed fund balance assignment and transfers and recommended council approval. In looking at the agenda statement, I passed out and updated one. The amount that we're proposing to transfer from the Astor Trail Construction Fund to the Astor Trail Debt Service Fund has decreased slightly. Instead of $331,279.40, it's now $325,665.05. And that is to leave a little bit in that fund. We do have a little bit of retainage out there that is owed to the contractor, so we'd like to.
Roughly how much?
About $5,000, a little over $5,000.
At some point, you'll close that out to?
Yeah, we're, we're essentially closing the fund, but we're leaving a little bit of cash in the fund to pay that final amount to the contractor. I would imagine that will be in the near future. So in looking at the proposed assignments, I've got a chart comparing what we had in 2013 and then what we're proposing for 2014. And I'll just briefly go through those. We're proposing a decrease in the employee insurance premium contingency from $46,925 down to $25,000. That's a set aside in the event we'd have a large health insurance premium. We're proposing to eliminate the human resources consulting assignment of $30,000. The staff just felt and the finance committee agreed that there was no longer a need for that. We do budget for that, but that large of a set aside was not needed. We recommend continuing with the 2013 assignment of $15,500 for the project to recodify the city's ordinances. For information technology, we're recommending a slight increase from $10,400 to $14,600. And this will allow us to complete the server upgrade, upgrade project that we began in 2014. For record scanning, we're recommending an increase from $4,000 to $20,000. We have been budgeting for this and have not been spending the money for scanning. However, given the move to city hall and the amount of space we have, the finance committee felt it was a good time to invest in scanning and so we'll look at what we can do with that in terms of getting the equipment we need and then possibly hiring an intern to do a lot of that scanning over the summer. There is an amount of $10,712 in there for unemployment benefits. The city is a reimbursing employer, meaning if a former employee gets unemployment benefits, we have to pay that regardless of the reason. The $20,000 for fire relief pension, the finance committee also discussed that. Each year, we budget for that and there was not a required contribution from the state this year, but the committee felt it would be a good idea to set that aside in the event there was a downturn in the, in the economy and pension assets were to decrease, that would give us a little bit of a cushion and not affect our budget. There's also a line item of $20,000 for either a PTO conversion or to set aside for sick leave severance.
PTO?
Paid time off. So we'd go to paid time off in lieu of the traditional vacation and sick plan that we currently have. And then finally, the last item is $80,000, which is a contingency for legal expenses. We have already budgeted for the Wasserman easement case, but we do have some other cases going and finance committee thought it would be a good idea to set that aside in the event there are some large bills for that. So the net effect is that the fund balance assignment would go from $106,825 in 2013 to $205,812 in 2014. And what would happen is if these amounts don't get spent, the council would have the option to transfer them or use them to offset other budget items. After the transfers would be completed, there still would be an additional $81,800 left in general fund, assigned, unassigned fund balance that would need to be transferred out in order to get to our 30% goal. So staff is recommending and the finance committee concurred on transferring that to the long-term street maintenance fund. That has been our practice in the past and that amount is in addition to the $165,000 budget amount that has already been done. Finally, I talked a little bit about the Astor Trail, that number. What that represents is when we, when we bonded for the Astor Trail project, we did not spend all of the money for that and per our debt covenant agreement, we need to transfer that unspent amount into our bond debt service fund. And I think that covers everything, so staff would be looking for a motion to approve resolution number 15-16 with the change in the Astor Trail Construction Fund and Debt Service Fund amounts.
Any questions or comments? Somebody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 15-16, approving fund balance assignment and transfers for year end 2014.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Kelly. Next, we'll deal with donations. We've got a lengthy list tonight, thankfully. Who wants to read them?
I move we accept donations from the following people and organizations. Canine Club and Spa Incorporated for $200 designated towards T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Signature Electric Company, an amount of $150. T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Rob's Electric, $200 for T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Park Nicollet, an amount of $150 for T-Ball and Coach Pitch. Alphabet Junction Learning Center, the amount of $100 for concerts, concerts in the park. Matheson Cabinets Incorporated, an amount of $150 for T-Ball and Coach Pitch. IWCO Direct, $150 for T-Ball and Coach Pitch. DMA Dentistry, $150. Concerts and movies in the park. Lions Tap, $200. T-Ball, Coach Pitch, concert and movie. And we thank them very much for their donations.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Let me just ask a quick question here. This is a little longer list than we're used to seeing and I see some, some themes here. I'm wondering if maybe somebody could elaborate on how the pocketbooks all opened up and graced us, because this is really a great outpouring for some pretty, pretty worthy causes.
Sure. I can certainly ask Anne Monchi to add in, but we do have a sponsorship program for annual events and we go out and we actively work with the businesses to see if they are interested in partnering with us on the items that you see here. Some of our sports programs, our concerts in the park. And so at this meeting and hopefully at the next few meetings, you'll be seeing the results of that, those partnership efforts.
Thank you.
This really says a lot about Victoria, too. As Jim said, we thank you very much for the generous contribution. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We've accepted the donations. There's no public hearing tonight. We have unfinished way to... I'm not sure what the right way to phrase it. Is it to dress, dress up that missing tooth?
I think through landscaping, we could certainly address some of it, but landscaping, at least under this arrangement, wouldn't have homes facing that street. Could be something that Lennar looks at further before they come back with the preliminary plat and maybe they have a different way of addressing that concern.
Yeah, because I, I said initially, my initial reaction was, well, it looks like a missing, missing tooth in a, in a beautiful smile. But there is some texture in that neighborhood. There is some variety and if it's done right, it could be a positive. What's the objections to the side yard facing lots from the residents? What, what were the objections? Didn't like it?
Nothing specific other than an opinion that it wouldn't keep the same character of the street.
How many people had this objection?
In numbers, I, I wouldn't know.
I guess when I look at this, this seems to me maybe a minor issue. And I don't know if, if, you know, the, everyone that's here is worried about the way houses are facing on, nobody lives there right now. And obviously, there's homes to the north and to the east, but for most of the homes, nobody lives there. So anybody that moves in, they'll know exactly what they're getting before they move in. So I guess...
I think the concern was with the existing residents whose homes face those, that they'll then be facing the side of somebody's garage. And that, that was the view that, I was at the meeting and that was the view that seemed to be of concern. I don't know, maybe a half dozen people kind of nodded and I don't know.
And one follow-up question. The size of the lots, setbacks, price points of the homes, how they look, how does this new phase compare to the previous phases?
The sizes of the lots in Phase One, specifically adjacent to the existing homes, the lot sizes are very consistent. And as I pointed out, in some cases, a little bit bigger than some of the adjoining parcels. They would allow for Lennar to build some of their larger building footprints, maybe similar to what you'd see in Rhapsody North. As you move further south, when you get south of Lakeside Drive, there are a few lots that would continue of similar size to the ones that are there today on Martingale. But then it would transition into sizes more consistent with what you'd see in Lake Town Eight.
Okay, so let's put some numbers on that. So are we talking half acre down to .25 acres or how?
I don't know specifically on this concept. They would seem to be closer to, probably just under a half acre. They would transition into closer to a third of an acre.
Okay. And I, I guess just from, you know, in my development, that's, those are the kind of things that worry me is, is changing the character of the neighborhood, going from a different type of home to a different type of home. And seeing those changes kind of, I know that stirred up quite a bit of controversy and I want to make sure that we address that, too.
Also, keep in mind, this particular neighborhood also already includes multifamily, is that the right term? Housing as you come into the neighborhood. So again, this, this has already got some very different types of development happening within the current build and will, it sounds like, continue down to that next level of multifamily housing, again, currently on the platform, Phase Three or Three?
History, correct. So I think at least what's being shown is trying to be more representative for what is adjacent to it. And then having the transition when appropriate further south in the project as you get closer to Marsh Lake Road.
What, what would those price points be?
I don't know from where we are that staff hasn't been provided with exit, a good representation of what price points would be. That would be something clearly identified as the rezoning process went through, where they start to identify which house types are being proposed and what some of those different opportunities are.
And then the side yard setbacks would be our 10?
It would be consistent with what's there today, 10? I think it's 1015.
So it's, on that point, it's 10 minimum on one side, 25 total. Is that correct?
There's one section that's 1025 and I believe the other one is 1010.
That would be in the eighth edition.
But this is gonna be, this ninth is consistent with the 1025.
At least from what has been shown, that would be the case. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to state something for the record that I'd like to compliment Ben and staff in terms of the communication that they have pursued in working as the information broker between the builder and the residents. You know, Ben having just come on board, actually Lori, too. Thank you, you're both doing a very good job.
Ditto.
I have one, I guess, comment question, and this is with respect to the playground area that's adjacent to the school. I'm a little bit troubled that, you know, we, we, the city made an agreement that took parkland that would be thought of typically as to serve the residents who bought homes in that immediate area and then took control of it and gave it to somebody else. And without parkland there that, then they can use during, you know, quite a bit of time, as I understand it. I'm wondering, A, is that, is that agreement open for discussion at all? Has there been any contemplation of that?
I can add a little color to that. Again, being a resident there, I was told there would be a wonderful park when I moved in, but it would be coming with a later addition and those additions magically did not occur when the economy went down. My first assignment, second assignment as a committee member was on the Park and Rec Committee. And that's when I learned that the park dedication was the school and that we should be able to use the school equipment. And it was a surprise to find out that we could not. That's a simple legal issue in terms of indemnification. If the school has teachers out there, there is no way they're gonna let people that are not part of the school participate in that. And so I agree, that was a big miss on the city's behalf, but we can't... It's water under the bridge. We gotta figure out how to take it forward and find a new park. We have one of our largest neighborhoods in the city that does not have a park. And so going forward, let's not do that again with the school district. It doesn't work, but let's find a way to bring a park to Lake Town.
Ben, the park that is under discussion now is roughly two acres. Is that, were people content with that? Is that the right, about the right size for the neighborhood?
I don't know that I've received any specific direction from anyone on whether or not the size really mattered. There have been people that have seen the location brought forward and for every reason have said, maybe I'm not interested in seeing that location. I don't know that I've had anyone say, don't put it there because I have concern X, Y, or Z.
The layout that's shown here with that outlot one being the park, the one that you showed the, kind of the virtual representation on, that's different than what was contemplated at the, at the neighborhood meeting. I think at that point, there were a couple of lots on the end of it, right on this end that, if you go back to that.
Sorry. Right here.
Yeah, the, the end that was closest to the school, there were two, I think, lots.
Two home sites.
Right, two home sites that were discussed as possible parks. But this whole big band and the, and the connecting trail, I think is a, is a enhancement maybe following that meeting. So I see the potential there, but the kind of little tot lot layout at the far end is maybe not... Yeah, it may not be adequate for a number of new homes, which presumably would be younger families.
Yeah, I, I guess I would agree. I think that the park that's shown there for what's gonna be one of the biggest developments, I mean, that's a, that's a joke.
Perhaps we can ask Anne Monchi, was there any comment or information given at Parks and Rec?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Parks and Rec Committee actually looked at this on two different occasions. And unfortunately, there's not a, there's not a way to obtain additional parkland through a dedication process here. But we have been looking at this for a number of years, actually since Councilmember Crowley was on the Park and Rec Committee. So, you know, originally, you know, really, nobody knows exactly what this property was for. It was dedicated as an outlot. And somewhere along the line, someone thought it would be a good location for a park back in the 2004 planning process, it looks like. My concern from the very beginning was access from Red Fox to this site. Actually, now coming in from the north or the northeast part of the, the development actually gives us a little bit of better opportunity to create some more active space. Before we, before we moved any further with this park concept, the Park and Rec Committee suggested that a neighborhood meeting would be helpful before we start getting into the planning process. But given the opportunity now of, of the opportunity, grade the site, add trail, add a playground, possibly a shelter, you know, there's almost four acres of land here that I think will work well for a park in this area devoid of, of the ability to get any more parkland here, so.
Do you circle with this, the mouse, the area that Anne's talking about, so the audience can...
If I can get it back, yes. This?
You got it right?
And again, if you flip to that virtual, that kind of...
Thank you, Anne.
Thanks, Ben.
It's a canine iron.
So Ben, I interrupted you going through that. Please continue.
So landscaping, I think I talked to that a little bit once we get a landscaping plan and I've already had a discussion with Lennar that, you know, specifically, some of those areas of infill, we'll get consideration of having the boulevard trees and consistent landscaping with what exists today in the neighborhood. So that's really the time that we'll start to address any of those additional landscaping items.
Could you describe, Ben, please? I, I learned today that there was a change in city policy regarding the boulevard trees.
Sure. Sometime prior to the creation of the Lake Town Eighth Edition, the city adopted a policy, actually, to remove boulevard trees from new developments. Or because the city was starting to acquire a ton of trees in the right of way that the city's been responsible for maintenance and budgeting for. That was being viewed as somewhat problematic because as the trees would die, if they weren't under warranty, the city was on the hook to go replace them. Not that whoever the staff and council was at the time didn't feel like it was a benefit to the neighborhood, but an ongoing expense that would maybe be somewhat difficult to budget for and adjust to.
So possible compromise there, assuming that there is a desire to maintain consistency that was not maintained in the Eighth Edition, is that there could be boulevard trees, but it would be the homeowner's responsibility to maintain those trees over time? Is that correct?
At this point in time, just from a staff level discussion, we would seek to find some alternative that would allow for more consistency with kind of that street boulevard tree look. From the HOA, as I've shared before, the current plan, unless there is some way of the current board of the HOA to allow for the Ninth Edition to be added into it, is Lennar would at least add the remaining portions of the Ninth Edition to the HOA that was created for the Eighth. At least then you would have two homeowners' associations instead of, you know, very many if a specific homeowners' association was created for each following development.
Is it possible to combine the existing two?
That's, at this point, it's a discussion that the homeowners' association needs to have with Lennar. And I think at least from everything I've heard, Lennar would be at least open to having that discussion.
I know, we combined the new additions under Ryland in our neighborhood that came in beyond D.R. Horton, and we combined that all into one HOA. And there was an agreement and, again, it's up to the current HOA.
Yeah, my understanding that, that it wasn't, they weren't combined, the current homeowners' association was not combined with the Eighth Edition because of the inconsistency in the landscaping and...
That's why they declined.
Lot size and things like that.
Hopefully, as we start to address some of those issues, there's an opportunity there.
There's someone, before we ask, there are a couple of residents who signed up to speak. Does anybody from Lennar want to address the group?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Tabone with Lennar. I'm an entitlement manager out of our Plymouth office. And with me this evening is our land development area manager, Joe Jablonsky. I wanted to take a few minutes and first acknowledge staff's effort and thank Ben and Kara and Lori as well in working with us through this. And also wanted to kind of go through the planning factors or discussion topics we've been working closely with Ben to address them to the best of our ability. Starting with the parkland dedication issue, had gone through the, the numbers and figured out we were about two acres short in our dedication. And Ben and I were kind of talking about it and looking at that underutilized parcel. When you look at that parcel, I think it was mentioned, it's about four acres in size. And if you take out the area of the pond, you're left with about three acres. And I think our deficit right now is about 2.27, if my memory serves me right. think our deficit right now is about 2.27, if my memory serves me right. So, that was something that we had discussed, and I think it's more closely illustrated on Slides eight, nine, and 10 of Ben's presentation. As far as the Carriage Drive lots go, we have looked at orienting those towards, more towards the street, and the way that carriage was installed, it was actually installed before I worked for Lennar, but the way that it's set up right now, the infrastructure is designed to come down Road One and Road Two, which would be serving those lots. So, if, yeah, so as Ben's pointing to it, if you were to actually orient those lots, 26, 16, 15, and two, up towards Carriage Drive, your infrastructure stubs for your sewer and water services are along those stubs adjacent to 16, 15, and then 26, you'd actually have to rip infrastructure out of the street to be able to provide individual services to homes if they were to front carriage. Additionally, as Ben mentioned earlier, if you have the homes fronting the interior streets, like in 26 through, or 23 through 26, or 16 through 21, you do end up having what appears to be a kind of a continuous green belt or backyard space area, and with some landscaping, it actually looks a little bit more aesthetically pleasing from Carriage Drive, as opposed to just having homes front onto carriage. You actually can see breaks in the facade of the homes along the streets. The other thing, too, is if you do orient those homes, say you turn 26 to front carriage, by the time you meet your setback requirements and orient your home, Lot 25 is looking right into the rear of that home. So, that's something that we try to take into consideration as well. As far as the homeowners' association goes, we are open to having that discussion. I personally was not with the company at the time that that effort was made, and I know Joe could provide a little bit more detail on that. Landscaping, we've been talking back and forth with Ben to address that with the next addition as well. I actually had on my list the Marsh Lake Road expansion. We've met with the county and met with the city, and actually do include the limits of proposed right of way based on that expansion on our plat. I think it's page three or four. So, we are looking at that option and would incorporate that as we go through the preliminary plating process.
Can I jump in just real quick?
Sure.
Just the workshop that we had before this, when we talked about the county's priorities, that's basically the process that has been gone through with Lennar to identify what that right of way need would be on Marsh Lake Road.
Okay.
So, then I know that there is a handful of environmental issues, including the Eagles' Nest wetlands. As Ben pointed out, we have eliminated several roads, including the, there was a road that went out to that little, oh, yeah, you pointed that out. So, we have eliminated the roads in trying to preserve and not interfere with as many of the wetlands as possible. I just wanted to point out, too, I did a quick calculation earlier today, because we have met with the DNR, the watershed, the Army Corps, and there's another one.
Bowser.
Bowser, yes. We met with all of them last week, and of the 72 acres of wetlands on site, multiply that out, it's a little over 3 million square feet of wetlands, and in phases one and two, we're proposing to impact roughly 33,300. 32,000 of that is for the connection in the road to Lake Wasserman Woods. So, that's like 1% of the wetlands that are on site of that 3 million square feet. But we're trying to stay out of the buffer areas and out of the wetlands as much as possible because we do realize that it's an environmental resource and it's an amenity that actually serves to enhance the community as well. Let's see. I had heard the concerns with housing type continuity, consistency. We are trying to meet what's going on in the market right now and being consistent with our Lake Town eighth addition. Part of the issue that we're facing is that for the homes that were built 10 years ago, Lennar doesn't build that product anymore. However, I was out along Carriage today, drove by there, and the facades of the homes, the architectural materials, the color schemes, they're all very similar in trying to have that cohesiveness throughout the neighborhood. Yes, the square footages are going to vary, however, we are coming up with variation in lot sizes as well so that we can be consistent with the eighth edition homes that were built, but also allowing for the larger homes that you would see built, that Lennar typically builds, while also accounting for the townhomes that have been a part of the concept since the plan's inception. So, I wanted to thank you guys for hearing this item tonight, providing us with your feedback. Again, thank you to staff, and we're available for further questions, and I may have Joe join me if need be.
Maybe we ought to hear from, there were two residents who wish to speak. I know there, we got a couple after the fact, but I'm going to limit it to two. As I said, everybody else who wanted, who wants to speak will get a chance at the public hearing, but in just of expediency, let's go with Tim.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. I apologize, I'm coming into this a little bit late, so I'm not quite up to speed, certainly not anywhere near as you. Concerns I have...
Would you excuse me? For the record, could you identify yourself and your address?
Certainly. My name is Tim Breslin. I live at 9200 Red Oak Drive. Some of the concerns I have, and some of this comes from the little bit of reading I've done, as well as the discussion here this evening, I guess would start with the It sounds like there's intention to contact the neighbors, but I'm always troubled, given the involvement I've seen in this kind of thing, to have not engaged the neighbors a little bit more earlier on, especially those directly affected, to get their feedback and input into this process. So, I'm grateful that you're going to approach them, but I really feel like that should have been a lot, done a lot earlier. It feels like you're in the process of discussing this now, and folks are starting to see the pretty pictures and starting to like the pretty pictures and getting comfortable with it, and I think that's problematic, Ben. I also think that's an additional problem is, is these are pretty pictures. I'm not familiar with your process, but my experience has been developers tend to put up the pretty pictures, much like the agreement, the donation of the parkland that has turned into school property. Certainly recognize the schools have requirements and want to be careful about who can access their grounds during the school day. All that makes fabulous sense, but if you look for this particular part of the community and you just subtract out that parkland, I believe the developer is well short in the parkland providing and meeting the requirements of parkland that they otherwise would have. So, we're well short on that. Now, we've got very pretty pictures on parkland that it, there's no guarantee that that's what they get, that is going to get built. There's a commitment that they might put up some money. There's no guarantee that the amount of money they put up will be sufficient to build what's been depicted, and then there's no guarantees on the timelines as to when it would get depicted. So, as you get these pretty pictures, everybody likes it, loves it, buys into it, and frequently they are not built. So, I see that as problematic issues with the parkland. Carriage Drive lots, I think it's a difference of opinion here. I think, to me, I recognize the feedback that some of the commissioners have pointed out, and Mr. Mayor, I believe there are some subtle differences in the way the lots are designed around streets that are visually appealing. However, I believe in this case, the differences are quite dramatic. I'm not convinced, although I recognize the comments the Lennar representative made, I'm not convinced that they're going to be as appealing as other parts of the neighborhood. I believe it would warrant significant consideration for reorienting those lots. I recognize that there's costs involved, but that's a cost of the developers, that's what they're supposed to bear. If there's a need to redesign the access points for the infrastructure, then I think that that's their burden. That's what they're here to do, and if that's what they should have the responsibility to do. And I guess I don't understand, I'm not sure if the changes in the city's requirements with respect to the boulevard trees is what is influencing this, but it seems like another nuance. I don't understand, I've never seen neighborhoods broken up into phases and not having the continuity, the fundamental continuity. I appreciate there's going to be differences in houses, and as the representative from Lennar said, it makes a world of sense that you'll have variations in housing, but you have the same continuity in types of materials used, color schemes, and things of that nature. But to drastically see extremes and differences in the neighborhood with respect to boulevard trees, street lights, and other things like that, orientation of the houses, I think are dramatic changes, and I think those changes then tend to detract from the appearance and visual satisfaction of driving through the neighborhood or walking through the neighborhood. And I'm confused, the homeowners' association, this really seems to be a deficiency in the code. I have never seen where you have phases of a development occur, and then you put the burden on to the homeowners now to marry up the homeowners' associations. It's a problem that seems like is a real deficiency. I appreciate the sensitivity to the Eagles' Nest and would endorse, you know, making sure that we protect that area, but again, this appears to be another burden that the homeowners are faced with now. So, we've had to redesign some of the parklands, and I'm not sure if I'm understanding this correctly, but it sounds like there's been a redesign of the park, the trails, and some of those kind of amenities that we've had to accommodate now for the Eagles' Nest, and on the basis of that, then it's, well, okay, now we just have less, and it's just, well, it is what it is, instead of the developer going back and maybe sharpening the pencil a little bit more and looking for other alternatives that we can accommodate these impacts. A couple of questions I did have, I don't know if it's appropriate or you could mention it. You've mentioned a number of times now that there's going to be a date that they come back with the preliminary plat, that'll be another public involvement section. Is that a date that's already set on the calendar? Is that a date you can share tonight?
It is not a date that's currently been set. From what we understand from Lennar, they intend to submit application for preliminary plat in early April, which would make the meeting date sometime in May based upon notification requirements and getting some initial review done by staff.
And is, and so that's, that would be advertised in the local paper?
That's correct. And I would also note that, as promised at the neighborhood meeting for the sketch plat, anyone that had provided their email address, I will also send out to that group as well, and I do also have the Lake Town HOA email in that list as well.
Another item, I apologize for circling back, I'm just walking through some of my notes here, and I see there was a talk about reorienting some of those lots on Carriage, and it sounded like it would overall reduce the net number of not lots in the project, but nobody said how many lots we've lost or how much we've changed, so I don't know what the real impact of that is, and I don't know what the reconfiguration of some of the infrastructure is ultimately going to cost. But again, to me, seems a burden of the business for the developer. I think that's, I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ben, did you get the list of?
Yep, I'm still shorthanning.
John, John Davis also asked to speak, and hopefully the rest of you will find that at least Tim and John's comments would parallel your own, and again, you'll get a chance when we have the public hearing to voice your concerns.
Okay. Name is John Davis. My wife Connie and I own the home at 1695 Carriage Drive. That's on the corner of Carriage Drive and Red Fox. So, we're pretty well impacted by this, since we're now talking about putting a park behind the yard of the eight homes that are there. They currently have very high steeped yards. The picture that was up, I think it was on Slide 11, is not representative of the area at all, because the park couldn't look like that unless you put in, I don't know how many tons of dirt. It flows all the way down to the pond from our yards, and from Red Fox is a very large hill that kids all sled on in the winter, because it takes them right down into the pond. So, that's a big hill that I think you're going to have to look at and maybe try to get something more representative of that. I have three areas that I wanted to address with you. First of all, thanks for holding the meeting. I got lucky, I just got back from Arizona today, spending a winter there, so my timing was perfect to be here and see what's going on. The playground. So, first is the idea of the land, of the area there and the slope of the area, and I assume, Ben, you probably have that information on how sloped it is, or someone has figured out what they'd have to do. Putting that in, I think, would impact the eight homes that are there dramatically, because today you have a walking path along Red Fox that's used quite often by the neighborhood, it's wonderful, people walking their dogs. All of us, I think, that live in those homes have dogs, so you know when people walk down there, your dog may wake up and let you know. Now, putting a park behind our homes in an area that was pretty much sold, that was a buffer into the pond, wouldn't be developed on, I understand things change, but the impact will be dramatic, and now also putting another walkway between the pond. Putting bushes there, you'll stop much of the view that the people in this area have, that I think if people went back to the original purchases of these homes, there probably was some type of an upcharge for those lots because of what you had. So, now that's being impacted. There's also another playground in the neighborhood that no one's mentioned. In the first, I don't know what area it's called, but directly to the east of us, between the Quad Homes and the Town Homes, which is closer to most of the new homes you're building, I'm sorry, closer to us than most of the new homes would be close to this park, there's a park there. So, we do have a park there. There is a school as well, and we've talked about all those issues, but there's a park in the neighborhood, so people should be aware of that, that there's a park. I think that, again, the discussion on how it's built, or what's built, or what's agreed to, that can all change, but as soon as you start putting up more trees, raising the land, it's all a wetland, so our yard's off flow off to that. I'm not sure what will be done on drainage, or what, you know, the engineers will look at that on. There's a lot of wildflowers, there's wildlife that goes through there. I'm not sure where the wildlife, the deer, the fox, our eagle flies right by, we'll probably lose that. We see that at least once a week go right by our homes, as do our, you know, people's children and grandchildren. So, I'm very concerned about that. Your Slide 14 was also a photograph of another neighborhood showing the side view, and up in the middle upper portion in the blue, it showed homes facing one road from the fronts, and all the other homes on the other side facing it from the side. Carriage Drive has one home that's faced on the side that Mr. Crowley had mentioned and the corner of Alphonse. Every other home on Carriage Drive faces Carriage Drive, from Red Fox all the way to Deer Run. So, by putting four homes in the middle of that structure, all of a sudden sideways, is going to completely change the appearance of that roadway, and anyone driving down that road, they will notice that. So, I think if we're going to give an example of something and use it to say, here's how it's done in another community, it ought to be a little more similar to what we're actually doing here, which is breaking up the very middle of a roadway to put things in sideways on it. And the fact that one house was already done that way, that mistake was made, I don't think should be the precedent to make four more mistakes on that roadway. The last note I had on my notes was the question about, will these be similar to what's in the current neighborhood, and prices, and it couldn't be answered, which I'm surprised that the people at our couldn't answer it. Finally, they said it's going to be similar to Section Eight or Edition Eight. Those homes are probably $100,000 less expensive than the homes that we're putting these right next to on Carriage Drive. So, we've already had our value impacted once with Edition Eight. My home is on the market now. I'm trying to retire to Arizona. I'm going to get affected a second time with this whole plan and anything that's going on here. It's probably already affected, in fact, this is now out, public knowledge, that we're trying to take some land away from the backs of these eight homes that have been there for eight years to 10 years. So, one last comment that somebody handed me in the audience before I came up here, and it's the concern that you're only listening to two of us when two more people have asked. Ben spent three different times, went to the same slide to explain what a great idea this was with this new addition, and yet we're not having people that live there talk, so I hope you'll reconsider that, but thank you for listening to me, I really appreciate the time.
Remind everyone, this is not the first time you've all had a chance to interact on this topic. Well, there will be a public hearing and you'll, before, with the approval of the, the submittal of the next plat, the preliminary plat, and you'll all have an opportunity to address us then. Council, any questions or comments?
How, Mr. Mayor, how many more people want to talk? I mean, I guess this is the first time that I've heard about it and...
About what?
I mean, that I've heard from them and not, it seems to make sense.
No, we're not, we're not, no, please, we have rules and there's a process here. In the past, until this council was elected, you wouldn't have, no one would have had a chance to speak. The chance to speak is... The chance to speak is at a public forum and it's at a public forum. And this is not a public forum. So please humor us, please respect the judgment. We let the two people speak and there will be ample opportunity for others to address before this is over.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion perhaps? I'm wondering if we're, isn't an opportunity to have another neighborhood meeting because I'm assuming this version of the sketch plat is the first time anybody's really seen it between the meetings.
Other than the people that were in the email address.
Okay, yep, but that is, right? Also, the other component is, I think there were some good questions raised in terms of, you know, how much trail's been lost, you know? If you take the school out of the equation, what is the parkland issue in terms of amount? Cost of reconfiguration of the lots? I understand it's expensive no matter what, but what does that mean in terms of that? And so, what I'd like to suggest is that there perhaps is another neighborhood meeting for some further discussion and understanding of some of those pieces as well before the preliminary plat gets too far down the line.
I'd also like to see the gap of the four homes, what that would look like if the four homes remained as currently configured. What could be done that would make that, I'm not sure it would be appealing, but at least acceptable? And it may not be anything, it may not satisfy anybody, but what that option is. And then similarly, if you reorient the homes, the cost of doing that and what that would look like, we know what it would look like. It would look like a continuation of the...
Sort of look like that.
Anyone else on the council or comments?
With respect to the park and rec dedication, it might be beneficial, Lori, to explain the process that we go through. Lennar, and I'll start it and you can tell me where I'm wrong and go down the right path. No, so the park and rec committee is comprised of citizens of Victoria and the citizens of that committee determine the makeup of the parks and make recommendations to city council on whether to spend money for those parks. So in the case of any park for Lake Town or any park for any other neighborhood for that matter, all of those designs are led by Ann Manke in the back as the committee chair and citizens of Victoria to determine what the makeup and design of that park will be. They approve and vote on what they think it should be and then present that to city council. I don't believe Lennar really has a say in what that park will look like other than they may dedicate land or not for that. Is that correct?
That's correct. And what we've been talking with Lennar about is that they would conduct some of the improvements to get the park ready to be built, some of the grading and the trail construction, and then parkland dedication fees that remain would be used to install the playground, whatever that might look like once we take it through the process.
Would that design, be it the grading, the playground equipment, all of that is determined by the Park and Rec Committee of Victoria, not Lennar, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Hold on that. Also, I believe if we use the Lake Bridge neighborhood as an example, there was quite a bit of neighborhood involvement to actually spec that out. So beyond just city staff, we also heavily engage the residents to get the kind of facilities that they wanted to see in their neighborhood park.
It's historically been a great neighborhood building, a great time for neighborhood building to bring neighbors out to make and participate in decisions that will impact them.
Lonnie made the suggestion about another neighborhood meeting. How do you feel?
I think between now and when the preliminary plat comes in, even if the preliminary plat's been submitted to staff, there's time to come up with that. Some of the information that was discussed by the council to kind of get more details on will require some work with Lennar, so I'll try to coordinate sometimes if it'll work and communicate out some options with the neighborhood.
And that's a commitment to the neighborhood. Any other comments, questions?
Should we go through the process again, just to make sure everybody understands? Sketch plat?
So after tonight, Lennar will go back, take this additional input and put together a preliminary plat. Again, as I've mentioned before, their emphasis is on phase one, so likely a preliminary plat would include only phase one. And there would be a rezoning attached to that to match the development plan to zoning of that property. There would be a public hearing as part of that process that the mayor had noted previously. And then after the preliminary plat, there would also be a final plat for any of those lots that are included in phase one to make them actual properties to be built and developed.
And Ben, that's an iterative process, correct? That if they come to the planning commission and their issues and the planning commission denies it, then they start that preliminary plat over again?
That's correct.
With another discussion?
Correct.
And then once planning commission makes a recommendation or approves it?
It comes for consideration.
Then it comes to council for consideration.
That's correct.
And I guess just to, sorry.
In other words, there's a long way to go yet.
I wanted to kind of even back up a couple steps. So where we are tonight, current step, city council, so this was originally presented very close to the current sketch at the neighborhood meeting at the old city hall, February 3rd? February 3rd. And I think for anybody who's interested in kind of getting the flavor of that conversation, tonight's city council packet, which you can download from the website, has the neighborhood, the neighbor comments for the people who are able to attend that meeting. And I think some of the accommodations or the adjustments that have been made to the plan are in tonight's packet. So you can get all of that information off the city website and kind of see what the process has looked like. And then immediately following that neighborhood meeting that night was the planning commission meeting where that was a significant portion of that discussion as well. And so the planning commission minutes should also be available to anyone who wants to kind of look through the history of how we got where we are with phase nine.
We'll see you all and when would you guess the neighborhood meeting would be?
Sometime in May, probably the middle of May.
And the ice will be off the lakes.
Maybe.
I hope so.
Again, thank you all for coming. I know it didn't address all of your concerns and all your issues and some of you are less than thrilled with the way with the process worked, but please believe, we want to listen and we, at the end of the day, we have to live with this as well, so we're committed to work with you.
Mayor, can I suggest we take a five-minute break while people that would like to leave can clear out and...
We're going to break, it's now 8:30. We'll reconvene at 8:35, those who wish to hear the rest of the meeting. With item C, the Rhapsody North Second Edition retaining wall. Ben, Kara?
Okay, so the item before you tonight, we had a retaining wall installed during construction of Rhapsody North Second Edition that did, upon further review, spill over from the property line, sorry, wrong mouse, onto the adjoining property that is currently owned by the city. Before taking action on this item and requiring the wall to simply be removed, staff did further analysis of the property that was encroached upon and determined that it was not a necessary piece of property that the city would need to retain, more so that it was a property line arrangement that was put together to maintain consistency in just lot sizes. But the piece of property here is not impacting the city's ability to access the area adjacent to the wetland here. And at this point in time, staff is recommending just getting kind of the blessing from the council to move forward with administrative approval of readdressing that parcel and connecting it to the property where benefit is taking place of that retaining wall. So the city is no longer responsible for maintaining it and we do not reopen up that entire development to fix the retaining wall. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Can I actually just ask a quick question?
Yes, you can.
Ben, can you tell me what exactly was the retaining wall put there for?
Probably a better question answered by Kara.
So you can see on here that this is an area of really steep slopes. So these are contour lines and it's a super steep property. So there's proposed retaining walls around a number of these lots. And inadvertently, when it got constructed, it, they ended up sort of field fitting it where it best fit with the contour lines that were out there when the contractor was out in the field and then realized that it had crossed off our, the lot and into the city outlot. So we certainly could order the developer to remove the retaining wall, but it's a pretty high significant retaining wall. We have, there's no reason for this, the line could have just as easily been drawn here for the property line because the wetland buffer is all the way down here. So the designer had just picked that place to draw the line on the page, so it didn't make sense to me to require them to rebuild a retaining wall that's already been built if we could relatively easily swap, give them a little bit more property.
So the intent was always for this retaining wall, retaining wall to be completely contained within that lot?
Correct.
So it's a bonus, I guess, to just expand the lot size to go back to the original intent?
Yep.
I would also point out that this does occur on occasion, but if it happened on private property, we might, as staff, we would be able to just have the necessary documents sent over to the county, but because we're talking about public property, wanted to make you aware of the situation and have you direct that typical process to have that transfer take place.
Who's the owner of the property at this point?
It's still the developer.
What's the developer?
This is Lennar.
Yep.
This is Lennar.
And what's the approximate area of land that would transfer?
Less than a quarter, I mean, it's a fraction of size. I apologize, I don't have it in front of me.
My question related to that is that if this was a private transfer, there would need to be some consideration in exchange for that? Is that something that needs to occur here from a legal standpoint? Do they need to pay us for it?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, it's a fair question. You know, we initially talked about just granting a license, not conveying ownership of the property, not reconfiguring the lot and making a conveyance. That wasn't going to work because those kinds of agreements are terminable and obviously terminating later and having a retaining wall over the property line wasn't acceptable to developer. So we came up ultimately with a conveyance. I'm led to understand that because the ground is unbuildable, other than as a retaining wall to hold up steeply sloped lands, it's of marginal or no value. But you raise a fair point, I don't know that we've evaluated whether there is any value to the property. Turn that to Ben or to Kara to respond to, but it's a fair question. I mean, in the normal, in the normal course, you're right, you would expect in a conveyance like that, there to be some consideration.
So at this point, I don't know if there needs to be or not. If it was a private property transaction, there would need to be.
Correct. And we have not had an evaluation made of what that land value would be and as the attorney noted, it would be rather marginal at best for the small piece of property that we're talking about.
I'm just more concerned legally, from the legality standpoint, it could be a dollar or it could be $5,000.
Right.
Is that something that we should look at before we move forward with anything?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I haven't raised it with the staff as an issue because it's my understanding that was the intent originally was that there be a retaining wall fully enclosed within the property boundaries. So to the extent we're simply trying to effectuate the attend of the plat, there would not have to be consideration. But you're raising a fair point about in the normal course, it was private parties, might a private party expect consideration? The answer is yes.
Does there have to be consideration or does not?
It doesn't have to be to the extent it's simply to implement the intent of the city in originally approving the plat.
Is it also fair to say that the part of the land that we're talking about here was kind of what was left over after the lots were carved out and then that just declared an outlot and deeded to the city? And that line could have been drawn almost anywhere within the property before that final outlot was defined and really had no more or less value to the city, the way it was drawn than what's being proposed now?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I'm led to understand from staff that the value, again, of the land that is the outlot we're talking about, the city outlot we're talking about is negligible. It is very steeply sloped, it's not buildable, it's not usable in some other way. So I think that's the point you're making and I agree.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I got a couple comments after you make a motion. Well, if it didn't have value, then why wouldn't the land have been included in the, in the lots originally? I mean, there is value. We go through a process and a certain amount of land is deeded as outlots to us, is that correct? So if we were short .25 acres, we'd have to make up .25 acres somewhere else.
If I might, this, this one is unique in that the outlots you're used to seeing us typically take are limited to wetlands and wetland buffers. Because of the steep slopes that exist, the designer decided to draw the lines somewhat randomly like this, based on what sort of minimum lot size they were looking to accomplish. So the city didn't ask for this outlot to be this large. If they would have proposed larger lots and a smaller outlot, we would have recommended approval of it because it isn't, it isn't for something. It wasn't to meet a requirement of the city. It's just not buildable land that they elected to convey to us, but we didn't ask for it.
I'm willing to support the recommendation, I'm just more concerned about the legality of it to make sure that it was legally correct.
That was my comment. And I guess then I would say, well, I have an outlot in the back, in my backyard with a steep slope and I'm going to put a retaining wall there and I'm coming in and I want my lot to be bigger.
When will you be in, Joe?
Soon, after the ground thaws.
Any further discussion? I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1518 approving the split of a minor property, of a minor portion of the property and directing staff to administratively process related, the related documents with Carver County.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have the zero, it passes. Stop sign request.
Mayor and Council, the next item on the agenda has to do with a stop sign request at the intersection right out our window here of Steger, Steger Lake Lane and Quamoclet. The city does have a stop sign policy in place. That policy has been in place since 2002. That policy governs the conditions under which we install stop signs at intersections. So if a resident contacts me about an intersection in their neighborhood and says we want to put a stop sign in, I review that request in accordance with that policy. Even before we moved in, we started getting feedback about this intersection and that was just based on the ice cream shop opening up and there being a large amount of pedestrian traffic moving back and forth at this intersection. So certainly that situation is only going to become more significant now that the library is open. There's a lot of pedestrians moving around this area. So we considered the request to add a stop sign at this intersection in accordance with our stop sign warrant policy. That's summarized in your staff report, but basically this intersection meets the requirements of warrant C, which is a petition warrants for local residential streets by administrative policy. Warrant C was met based on three criteria. First, we received a petition signed by more than 50% of the property owners located within 600 feet of the intersection. The streets at the intersection do not, this isn't intersecting as at a right angle, you're kind of coming in as, at a skew. Minimum sight distances aren't met because the building is blocking your view when you're approaching the intersection from here and when you're coming this way, your view is obstructed. And when you're coming this way, your view is obstructed. And then finally, the intersection is budding a park, major shopping center, or high pedestrian use facility. I'm considering the library and City Hall building to be a high pedestrian use facility. So the request does meet warrants. The policy requires that the city council approve a resolution identifying the intersection as a controlled intersection and authorizing installation of a stop sign. With that, I will take any questions.
So is it a stop sign or a three-way stop?
It would be a three-way stop.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. There already is a stop sign here, but we'd be adding... An important item of note.
Would crosswalks be painted in conjunction with the stop signs?
So what we're currently working on is we're reviewing this parking lot to see... There's a number of things that really don't work with this parking lot with what's happening in this area. There isn't a second access point here. So right now, cars come in and they have no choice but to back up or they drive over the curb, both of which are not things that I am comfortable with in a parking lot with kids going to and from a library. So we are working on relaying out this parking lot to see if we can't get through traffic, get circular traffic through it to the two access points. We've put half the... We put a ped ramp over here. So the intent is that there'll be another ped ramp here and we'll have a crosswalk in this general location. We also only have temporary locations for ADA compliant parking right now. And we need to restripe some of these stalls in accordance with what those requirements are and have access across the street safely. We do have our ped crossing sign out there right now, even though there isn't a ped ramp or a crosswalk there. But I would imagine we will continue to have that in that location. And then the next crosswalk is up here. So I don't foresee adding another one at this location. We couldn't fit another ped ramp in with the way the grades were until over here.
At least we're putting them in and not taking them away.
Not taking them away, yeah.
Maybe I should review that again. But so, there's going to be some cost associated with this work. We recently had the property resurveyed. We're looking at whether or not it makes any sense to widen things out or not necessarily install a sidewalk, but at least pull the parking stalls back so that there's a pedestrian area along the front of the building. It's tough... Or another parcel. It's tough to decide how much to do with what was laid out as a temporary parking lot back in 2003, I think it was. If there continues to be redevelopment potential here, constructing a six-foot wide concrete sidewalk today seems a little premature, but we want to try to move pedestrians through better than exists currently.
So is there an opportunity to excavate back further?
There is. So that's one of the things we're looking at. It's just how much expense do we want to put into it? So we're looking at how much money we have available left from the City Hall Library Project Fund to help us with the costs of these improvements.
Be part of our discussion after the meeting? In terms of development priorities, will it be part of that?
It'll be part of the discussion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-19, a resolution identifying the intersection of Quamoclet and Steger Lake Lane as a controlled intersection and authorizing installation of a stop sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We put in the stop signs. 78th Street and Cochia Lane Improvements.
Mayor and Council, I did want to just provide the city council with a brief update on what's happening with the 78th and Cochia project. The city council authorized design of those improvements last year. The plans are nearly complete. Permits are starting to come into place. But if you recall, last year, we had a concept in from a developer for this property. It was a concept by K-Hove. They've since let their option lapse and won't be proceeding with development. We had been kind of waiting for them to move through the process because our project requires stormwater management. And it would have been really handy to be able to accomplish that stormwater management as part of their development. So like, the engineer that was working for K-Hove was already looking at being able to accommodate our stormwater into their stormwater ponds so we wouldn't have some separate stormwater feature in the area. Now that development is not imminent, we sat down and met with the property owners last week, I think it was, because in order for us to proceed with the project, we would need to acquire an easement from them for a biofiltration basin and a pipe outlet across their property. Obviously, it was just our first discussion. It was the first they were seeing of what size of easement we would need. Much more conversation would need to happen with them moving forward. But it certainly is a possibility. It's of benefit to them to have these roads improved and have the trail constructed. It helps their marketability from a development perspective if that is in. So they understand that it makes sense to kind of work through that with us potentially. I don't know whether we'd be able to reach an agreement or not. It's way too soon to say. But in terms of what that means to our project schedule, we could still construct the improvements this year if we obtain the easement by the beginning of June. We would be taking bids. Obviously, I'm not going to take bids until closer to when that would be. So instead of bidding in like February, we'd be bidding more like in May. The alternative would be to keep working on the easement and work to complete a project in 2016. So the point in that would just be being able to bid the project earlier in the year. The third option would be to just put the project in hold until development occurs on the property. We are not recommending that because 78th Street is in horrible shape. If you've had an opportunity to drive it lately, you would notice that it's in really rough shape. So if we delay it, we would end up having to put some pretty significant maintenance dollars into the road to address how badly the potholes are and how badly cracked up it is. When you start throwing maintenance dollars on roads that are in this condition, it really is a waste of money because what you see out there right now will pop right back through. So any potholes we fill, they just reform because the subgrade is in such horrible shape. The neighbors who live here are getting excited about Cochia no longer being gravel. So I get calls from them asking for what the status of the project is because they've grown weary of living next to what they used to love as their gravel road. That's not all of them. I haven't heard from every one of them, but I've heard from a handful of them. Then another option the city could do would be to pursue an alternative project for 2015. And maybe what we do is a combination of all of these things where I'd like to have some more conversations with the property owners to see what their interest would be in providing an easement or not. It really is too soon in that process for me to have any sense of where things are, how they feel about it. But we could get rolling on an alternative project, which is in our 2015 and 2016 CIP. We're trying to start tackling Deer Run. So Woodstone was done in 2007, but the rest of these streets are in really deteriorating condition. What we're proposing here is a reclaim and overlay type project, which was similar to what was done on Woodstone. It's a pretty easy design package to get together because we don't have to do detailed surveys because the road's staying in its existing location. We're just grinding up the pavement that's there, adding drain tile for sump pump connections and then repaving it. I have heard from a couple of residents from this area asking how soon we'd be there because they're growing weary of some of the conditions on some of the streets. So what I'm kind of thinking is we keep down the easement acquisition path, but I take a closer look at what the costs are associated with these streets, meet with the finance manager to talk about budgeting, and then bring this back for further discussion at the next council meeting.
Mary, the Deer Run reclaiming... When is that scheduled for?
Part of it is in 2015 and part of it is in 2016. I would have liked to have gotten kicked off on the 2015 part, but staff was a little busy with...
Other things.
Couple of new buildings and a couple of new staff members, so... But it was split. We were doing part of it in 2015 and part of it in 2016, which, you know, isn't horrible, but it'd be kind of handy to get in there once and get out.
So your recommendation is?
Wait to hear back from me next meeting unless you have any comments you want to pass along to me now.
Council have comments?
Not at this time.
We'd like to hear from you. Report to the city manager?
Thank you. At our last meeting, I had let you know about two data requests that we received that seek personal information that is in the possession of individual council members rather than in the possession of the city. And I made the differentiation last time that normally I don't review all Data Practices Act requests with the city council. What made these two requests unique is just that that they're seeking information in the possession of individual council members and not in the possession of the city. And tonight, I have included in the correspondence packet or in the city manager's report, an update on that item. We've been working diligently with our city attorney and our responsible authority, City Clerk Jenny Crash, have been working through the mechanics of how we provide the information that is being sought. And the solution that we're working through right now is to engage the services of Shepherd Data Services. They are a private company that does... Facilitates this kind of work. They've provided a cost estimate in the range of about $2,000 to $3,500. I want to stress that that is an estimate. It will vary based on the volume of data that ends up being processed by them. But the... Working with a third party will... It will facilitate getting the information that we need while protecting the... There will be information that is not city business that is obtained. And as a city, we also have a responsibility to protect that private data. Working with Shepherd Data Services, I believe, will accomplish those goals and allow us to respond in a timely manner. I want to let you know, I wrote this agenda statement last week. And so I optimistically said that we have engaged Shepherd Data Services and legal has approved the agreement. We are still working through some legalities of the agreement, but we are diligently working through that process.
Resident Peter O'Gorman has asked to speak. And Peter, just a sec. Anybody in the council have anything you'd like to add?
Bob Hill, you'll review everything and...
Yes.
Thank you.
Who else? Peter?
Peter O'Gorman, 729 Gannon Way, Victoria. I just want to read this quickly to you. And you had mentioned a couple of things that may not be as pertinent, but bear with me here. So mayor members of the city council, at the last city council meeting, you talked about data requests that have been submitted in the city in the last 18 months. You said there have been more than 20 of them. Responses to the previous data requests contained hundreds of pages, boxes and boxes of documents, countless DVDs. And when those requests were submitted, the city responded to them. The news media wasn't alerted and no significant mention of them was made at the city council meetings. And last week, on the agenda for this meeting, I was interested to see that the information on the city's response to recent data requests would be discussed tonight. I don't understand forensic IT very well. It's way above my pay grade. But it appears to me that the fact that the city needs to spend extra public money to hire an outside agency to acquire its own government data from its own elected officials is an administration of a... I'm sorry, is an admission of a significant failure to really effectively maintain public data that is entitled to be viewed by the citizens by law. Victoria has a highly skilled administrative staff. And from what I understand, they've been able to fulfill all of the previous data requests. The notion that the data being sought by people looking for transparency about city affairs will cost the public extra money is absolutely not right. The city has a responsibility to acquire and have ready for public review all government records. The fact that extra public money needs to be spent to do so shows a lack of proper protocols and procedures regarding data maintenance here at City Hall. And with regard to the agency you've hired or you are in the process of hiring to assist in the collection and indexing of the electronic data, Shepherd Data Services, I truly question if they will be an independent third party over which this council and administration have no influence. Now, it was the choice of city council members to use business and personal email servers instead of those provided by the city. The taxpayers should not pay extra money to transfer official government data from the personal and business email accounts of elected officials to the city server for efficient storage and review by the public. Those costs should be incurred by those who chose not to use the city's communications infrastructure to conduct city business in the first place. And I'm pleased when any city matters are discussed at the public city hall meetings. I've hopefully made that pretty clear in all of our communications. But I believe that in this situation with the fact that more than 20 previous data requests have not been discussed as far as their responses, the materials, the requests themselves, what the responses would and did contain, they have not been discussed in any city council meetings. And that the discussion tonight is simply to possibly intimidate or embarrass those who have submitted recent data requests or at the very least intended to dissuade others from requesting government data in the future from the city of Victoria by incorrectly implying the data requests typically cost a taxpayer money. Data requests don't deserve punishment, nor should they be used in an attempt to ridicule in a public way. They deserve response and complete compliance. It's a matter of good government and transparency. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of our city attorney. Would you please state for the record? For, I don't know...
How many times?
What was the city's policy for email up until two years ago?
Well, Mayor and Council, I wasn't here, but I'm advised that until, I don't know if it was two years ago, until sometime, some period ago, council members didn't have, through the city, emails. Didn't have city-established email accounts. As I said at the last meeting, and I don't think is challengeable or debatable, that is a very common practice among cities around the state. Some of your residents' comments, I think, were a maybe strong argument to the legislature to change that. But the law of Minnesota does not require that cities establish for council members email accounts. This city operated that way, as do or as did many, many cities around the state. And so the policy of the city was that you were... If you were going to communicate by email as council members, you were going to do it via your own email. Now, I don't think that was a formalized policy, but clearly, that was the policy of the city. It's not a surprise to anybody that as council members, you would have been contacted by email. So that was the city's policy.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We believe in the Native Practices Act. We believe we've complied fully with past requests and we're going to comply with this one. The difference is, we've been asked to provide our personal computers. And I doubt there's anybody in this room, if I asked you to produce your personal computer for my review, if you'd... how you'd feel about that. So we have to tread a little bit more carefully with this request than we have with others. But we've complied with every other request and we will comply with this one. End of story. Anybody else have anything?
I guess I'm a little surprised at the presentation of information from Mr. O'Gorman tonight. Since you clearly viewed the video of the last council meeting, you know for a fact and yet chose not to state it that it wasn't a choice to use a city email account or not. You choose to present us as being deceptive and evasive. And I think that you know that's not right. If you watched the video, there was no city account available to council members until two years ago.
Anything else?
Your choice.
Take a motion. Go ahead.
Would I be able to respond to that?
Sure.
Okay.
Just real quickly, you know, perhaps I could have added a little bit more succinct... Just real quickly, you know, perhaps I could have added a little bit more succinctly that some kind of policy or protocol should have been in place in order to, for the city itself, now that the server has been established a couple of years ago, to acquire all of the data that the city has had electronically in your folks' possession, or whoever the previous elected officials were. And that is something important, and I'm not choosing to include that. There have been outside choices made to use outside email servers as well. And I guess prior to two years ago is what, that's only, from what I understand, that's only part of the data request that's being asked for is just from, than before two years ago. Also, in the past couple of years, it has been the choice of the city council, in some cases, to use private email accounts. So that's what I was pointing out. So I apologize if I didn't include that in my little spiel here. But I definitely understand and agree with the fact that someone said that last time, that prior to two years ago, yes, you guys had to use your own personal email information, so.
And to, thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
And, you know, again, to reiterate the conversation from the last meeting, this is the city's, or the citizens' information. It is your data. You absolutely have a right to it. We completely support that. There's no debate about that. And we're trying to make sure that we do that in a way that does also respect the privacy of private data, regardless of whose it is. And as far as the comments about intimidation, again, maybe it's an opinion. It's one that I think is completely misplaced. I think it was completely appropriate for the city manager to, in the interest of transparency, articulate why these were unique and why the citizens would have an additional expense in order to collect up and to fulfill this data request. I think it would be dishonest not to make that information available.
You know, what's really disappointing is the cynicism. It's just disappointing. All you had to do was ask, and we produced the material. Everything so far has been produced as requested. We will produce this data. Yes, our telephone records. Would you give me your telephone records? Don't, I'm not, that's a rhetorical question, because I know the answer is be no. We're going to comply with legal support. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.